Nuen Penalosa?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tran?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask, Matt, are you going to do the invocation even though you're the man of the hour?
(laughing)
Okay.[20.22][20.25](laughing) May I ask you to do the invocation followed by Councilmember Kim Nguyen Penalosa to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right. Thank you. Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here today, let us invoke the spirit of unity, purpose, and progress. Let our hearts be filled with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community and our minds be open to the possibilities that lie ahead. Guide our actions to be considerate and deliberate, recognizing their pivotal role in shaping the decisions that guide our city's future. We ask this in your name. Amen.
If you write down your heart, please apply and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. We will now recess and go over to the Housing Authority. If I can hand it over.
May I please have roll called?
Commissioner Dovin?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klumpfstein?
Here.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen? Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Tran?
Here.
Vice Chair Brightigam?
Here.
And Chair Nuen Penalosa?
Here. Do I have anyone wishing to speak for, under our Housing Authority? Seeing none, I'll move right along. I have consent items. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move them. Consent calendar?
Second.
You call for vote?
We will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Dovin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpfstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brightigam?
Yes.
And Chair Nuen Penalosa?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Do I have any matters from commissioners? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting and pass it back on to City Council.
All righty then. Before we go to community spotlights, I need to pull a couple items out of order from our consent calendar. So can I pull item four? And can I get a motion on item four from the consent calendar?
Move it.
Hold the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Ursula, take that away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. For more than 60 years, the U.S. Small Business Administration, the SBA, has celebrated National Small Business Week, which acknowledges the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. This year, National Small Business Week takes place April 28th through May 4th. National Small Business Week is about celebrating the backbone of our economy by recognizing the entrepreneurs, small businesses, and innovative startups that define our communities. In Garden Grove, the vast majority of our businesses fall into the category of small business. A thriving hub of entrepreneurship reflects the diverse cultural fabric of our community. With a dynamic blend of startups and established small businesses, Garden Grove cultivates an environment where all businesses, including minority-owned, flourish across various sectors, including hospitality, retail, healthcare, and fitness. This vibrant tapestry of enterprise encompasses cozy cafes, bustling bakeries, modern fitness centers, fresh markets, and convenient neighborhood stores, all contributing to the economic vibrancy of Garden Grove. The SBA administers a nationwide network of small business development centers, SBDCs, to provide management assistance to current and prospective small business owners. Garden Grove has established a collaborative relationship with our local SBDC office, the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center, in order to proactively assist small business and help grow the local economy. It is my pleasure to introduce Roger Lloyd, the Center Director of the OCIE SBDC Marketing Center. Roger will share more detail about their programs and efforts to assist small businesses and the partnership with the City of Garden Grove. Roger, please come up to the podium. And you do have a PowerPoint?
Thank you very much, everybody. Hey, guys? All right, cool. So thank you, esteemed council members. And thanks to the Economic Development Department, of course. You guys are amazing. One of the best. And before I start, and thank you, Lisa, I just want to let everybody know if you're familiar with Gemini, which is the ChatGPT version Microsoft Google? I Googled Garden Grove Economic Development. Now, keep in mind, it's agnostic to like the country. And one of the areas of highlights was actually the Economic Development Department of Garden Grove. So I don't know if you guys know that or not. It was right after one of the strawberry capitals of the world. It was right after that. So it's not number one, but it's number two. Anyways, so my name is Roger Lloyd. And for those of you guys that don't know, we're going to go through real quickly, briefly, the SBDC, Small Business Development Center. Are you guys, I know some of you are. Mayor Jones, of course you are. Mayor Pro Tem Tran, I believe you are. But are you guys all familiar roughly? Okay. Well, I'm going to go through it really quickly. So hopefully this clicker is going to work for me. Is it going over here? There we go. Okay. So here's who we are. Our job in the nation is to help small businesses grow. That start, expand, grow. And by SBA definition, it's under 500 employees. It's like touches almost everybody. In our region, it's Orange County, Inland Empire. And how do we do that? We do that through training. So we're training programs we put on in Garden Grove, like our Main Street AI, I'll talk about in a second, one-on-one consulting, and then using market research reports to help. The beauty of this is because of our funders, Cal OSBA, and the Small Business Administration, guess how much it costs for a small business to have one-on-one consulting? Does anybody know? Zero. It's already funded. Okay? So if anybody wants to use our services, they don't cost a thing, which is pretty cool. These are all the different centers that we have. And we focus on tech centers. We have access to capital centers. We have My Specialty Marketing Center, which is one of the leaders in AI content marketing. That's me. We're going to back this up. And thank you, guys, again, for having us here. So let's talk about some of the programs we just recently did. We did a digital marketing grant program, which is really cool. We, we actually gave everybody that went through the program, which was six weeks, we gave them $500 to be used for paid advertising. So if you wanted to identify how to use Google Ads or Yelp or something like that, a lot of times, business owners are apprehensive. And so this is a way to dip your toe into the water, test it out, see what it was, and you had a consultant walk you through the program, which is really cool. We did, we did a town hall during COVID, where we were on with a few others, just talking about how to get grants. Remember the times of like just survival grants? So at that point, it was like the doc, like just, we were the call to action across the nation because there's about 10,000 consultants across the country. We just recently finished a small business big impact marketing summit with over 50 people attending. Did anybody go to that? Anybody? Okay. That's my fault. I'll have to get more people to know about those things. What can I say, right? And I run the digital market, the marketing, go figure. And then the one that really I'm proud of is Garden Grove hosted our Main Street Meet Say AI program. Did anybody go to that? It was last October. It was the first time in the country, we had nine different sessions. Think about this. For Garden Grove, City Garden Grove, that's the first time it was ever held in the country with nine sessions at no cost. That was a big deal. Really, really proud of that one. So some other things that we worked on with the, with the city, as well as the chamber, I don't know if Clive is in here, if anybody's part of the chamber. We did a video marketing strategy workshop for just restaurants. Obviously, we just talked about the importance of restaurants in the community of Garden Grove. Does anybody own a restaurant here?
Yes.
There we go. Okay. So I don't remember seeing you guys there, or wish you would have been there. It actually was showing you how to use video, AI for video to present a restaurant to drive growth. It was really, really well attended. We're always at all the events as a resource partner. And then, again, just talking about some of the use AI in content marketing for efficiency for business owners, which is so paramount today, right? There's a stat that's, if anybody wants to real quickly guess, the expectation of using AI for a small business owner, how much time can they spend on a percentage basis? Does anybody want to guess real quickly?
Two tenths of one percent.
Two tenths of one percent. So the stats in the neighborhood, about 60% plus. If you are a business owner and you use the tools that we, you learn on your own, or we can train you on these, you will save 60% for repetitive tasks, for growth. Everything about small businesses and the way the Garden Grove supports the small business community is amazing. And I was just sharing real quickly, again, one of the top economic development departments in the country. So some of the things that we're, that we could talk about coming up in May, June, right? An access to capital program, right here. Capital is the lifeblood of small businesses, right? Traditional, non-traditional, all the different ways. Most of us don't know about it, so we have a pulse on that. So we're going to bring that here. Hopefully, you guys all attend, and that's going to be sometime May and June. The other thing is business growth, pack, double your revenues, overall business strategies on how to grow. One of the challenges we see is when businesses are around 500,000 to a million dollars, how do they double? There's this block at that moment in time. It kind of goes like this, and it's levels off for a while, and then you've got to figure out how to go up here, right? Through hiring people, through increasing, through, there might be getting capital, doesn't really matter. That's what that's going to be all about. And in October, November, a digital social marketing conference. Again, because it changes so quickly. And then some of the future possibilities we're thinking about that we'd love to bring to the community, a four-week certification program on how to use artificial intelligence with tangible results. All one-on-one consulting. How to do business with the government? That's always a big one, is how do I go through the process? We have the bill that says they got to do business with 25%, small businesses, right? At the state level. But how do I go through the process? Financial literacy is a big one. Another one that's really interesting is mobile marketing on your mobile. Because everybody is moving around so quickly. How do you leverage that, right? How do you take advantage of the phone while we're in the field? That's a big one. So we think that'd be kind of cool. Social commerce. Does anybody know about social commerce real quickly? Anybody bought anything on Facebook lately? Anybody? No? Okay. What if I told you, like, this year, it's going to be about $60 billion in revenue? So for small business owners, that means a lot, right? The opportunity to be able to take advantage of learning how to just post real quickly and sell product. So we want to see that. And then we want to bring everybody into the new payment solutions that are out there. A to A stands for account to account. So it's, what that means to a business owner is very simple. The percentage of processing a payment for your business drops bottom, to the bottom line. And then we have some business start programs, and then talking about how can you expand internationally? We actually have a global trade side. So if anybody wants to really take their business overseas, we just finished a mission to Korea last month. It was pretty cool. We took 10 business owners over there. And that was, that was exciting, and obviously, it was very successful. And then lastly, these are the current programs we have right now. We have a food incubator program, if anybody wants to just learn how to start selling food. Cottage, doesn't matter. Or getting a cottage license, doing it in your house, setting a restaurant up, it doesn't matter. OC Made is a four-year program where you actually start from scratch. And at the end of it, you actually get to go sell your products at a, at a, a local farmer's market. And the booth is covered, the cost of the table. Beauty Boss, anybody who wants to open up their own cosmetology business? CEO Moms for Women Entrepreneurs, five weeks. And then Main Street Digital, which is a six-week course, sometimes with grants, with not, just learning everything fundamentally you can learn about today. By the way, we're talking about 2024. And then what's out there for just types of grants or expansion that you could have through one-on-one consulting? And then the last thing I want to share with you guys is this is what we did last year, just one year, okay? We helped, I don't know time-wise, how am I doing on time? Yeah, I got to go fast. Okay. So statistics, nine business starts. We helped businesses increase their sales by $335,000. This has just been one year. And this is small to read, so I apologize, but I thought it'd be interesting to see one of the top five businesses in industries we've counseled, which is retail, professional scientific, professional technical services, healthcare, other services, all over the place, and main factory, which is a big piece of it. And then just some of the needs that we're getting most requests on, we'll jump past the one in the middle. Startup assistance, marketing, managing business, financing, capital, and retail. Those are the five top counseling requests that we have from the City of Garden Grove. And the last thing I'm going to leave is just, anything else that we can help your business owners with, my door is always open. With that, thank you, you guys. Appreciate the time.
Awesome. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. Roger's enthusiasm for the success of small business is definitely palatable, and that's why we like partnering with, with him and the Small Business Development Center, because we are passionate about helping our small business development community, small business community here in Garden Grove. So with that, we're going to move on to the community spotlight portion of this. And I wanted to talk, start by talking about the Foods of Garden Grove, which is a program that was established during the pandemic to help an important segment of the Garden Grove economy. Restaurant tours were particularly hard hit with social distancing and mandated closures. The city, demonstrating its support of this vulnerable business segment, created a website and utilized social media to promote the eclectic mix of amazing food venues in Garden Grove. As new restaurants continue to make Garden Grove their home, the city desires to continue the promotion of unique, ethnic, and in many cases, award-winning restaurants that collectively make Garden Grove a foodie destination. The city is proudly relaunching the Foods of Garden Grove to brag to all of Southern California about our vibrant food scene. It is fitting that this year, for National Small Business Week, we acknowledge some of the hardest-working small businesses in Garden Grove that share their hearts and souls daily with their customers through their food. Each council member was asked to recognize only one restaurant per district, and trust me, this was a difficult choice for the council members. I will ask, when I mention the name of the business, if you and your representatives, please stand and then sit down when the next business is mentioned, and if we could all hold our applause until after all six businesses are identified. So for District One, Councilmember Brightigam recognizes Bite of Jersey, located at 5244 Lamson Avenue. Mr. Fabian Gallego is the owner. Bite of Jersey opened in 2011 and has a mom-and-pop feel with a casual vibe and fresh food. Mr. Gallego has been in the food industry for a long time and opened a Bite of Jersey in Garden Grove because he saw a need for this type of business. Thank you. So District Two, Councilmember O'Neil recognizes Sababa Falafel, located at 11011 Brookhurst Street. Sal and Suzie Sababa are the owners. The restaurant industry has been Suzie's passion since she was 18 years old. She considers the restaurant a piece of home. Sababa Falafel is a Palestinian-owned business that offers Middle Eastern falafel from every region of the Middle East. For District Three, Mayor Pro Tem Tran recognizes Loy Kitchen, located at 10130 Garden Grove Boulevard. Mr. Lam Duo is the owner and inherits his passion for cooking from his father, who was a head chef. Their signature dish is fish vermicelli, which takes a lot of time to prepare. They are passionate about serving authentic, affordable Vietnamese dishes that everyone can enjoy. For District Four, Councilmember Dovin recognizes Milak Hai, located at 10078 Westminster Avenue. Katie Bond Combs and Candace Tran are the owners. The restaurant has been in Garden Grove since 1991, and the recipes have remained the same for over 40 years. They put their hearts into cooking, and their approach prioritizes quality over quantity. Seeing the customers happy when eating their noodles is the motivation behind this longstanding restaurant in Garden Grove. District Five, Councilmember Klumpfstein recognizes Shorma House, located at 12531 Harbor Boulevard. Mr. New Darkael is the owner of the, and has operated three different restaurants in his home country of Palestine. The Garden Grove location opened in 2019. While their dining area is not large, they acknowledge an amazing customer base that brightens their atmosphere and allows them to grow with the people of Garden Grove. District Six, Councilmember Nuen Penalosa recognizes Los Sanchez Restaurant, located at 11906 Garden Grove Boulevard. Mr. Victor Gomez is the owner. His brother Sebastian made Victor his partner many years ago, and Los Sanchez has been in Garden Grove since 1979. Everything is homemade at the restaurant, no prepared foods, it's all fresh. Customers have been coming for generations. The little kids that came with their parents are now bringing their own kids. So the City of Garden Grove is honored to have, we are honored to have these great restaurants in our community. Please give a warm round of applause to these hardworking small business owners. Thank you.
May I ask those restaurateurs to come up? We could, sir, to present to you. I think that's you. Make sure I got the right one. Thank you.
One of you, one of you could come over onto this side.
Congratulations.
Yeah, a couple off over here on this side, yeah.
Oh, that's a lot of cameras.
Look at this wall.
Say Los Sanchez.
I've been going since 79. Get easier, Victor voice. Yeah.
Yeah. I thought they were shutting.
I could have grabbed, they shut it. Because a couple of, several.
Thank you guys, thank you very much.
Bye, guys. See you soon. Yep.
Over on Harbor?
Seventy-nine.
Over on Harbor?
I started working in June of 79.
Well, my district's so many businesses, but I have their hidden on my day of view.
Yeah. Oh, that's cool. Oh. Yeah, I want to go try them.
I'm maybe two percent too.
Ah, nice. Nice.
All righty. Well, reconvene, going out of order again, I want to pull item five from oral, I mean, from consent calendar.
Item five is an adoption of a proclamation celebrating May 1st through May 7th as Youth Week.
Can I get a motion on a second? Hold the vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Great. And may I ask Stephanie Chanji to come forward?
You're going to present it? You're going to present it first?
I'll read it?
No, go ahead and read it first, and then I'll present.
All right, there is a proclamation that the mayor will be providing for May 1st through 7th, 2024, Elks Nation Youth Week. Whereas, the benevolent and protective order of Elks has designated May, May 1 through 7th as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas, Garden Grove Elks #1952 will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And whereas, no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and in who, and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas, our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement, which we alone cannot give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership. And whereas, to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities for citizenship. Now, therefore we, the Garden Grove City Council, do hereby proclaim the first week in May as Youth Week and urge all our citizens to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. Mark this day, April 23rd, 2024.
Good evening. On behalf of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge #1952 and our exalted ruler, Tony Lopez, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration. Elks Lodges across the nation dedicate the first week of May to the youth in their communities. My name is Karen Garland, and I am the Youth Activities Chairman at our lodge, where every week is Youth Week. Some activities we have done this year include donating playground balls and equipment to the Title I elementary schools in the Garden Grove School District. These schools also received winter coats for students in need. We hosted a Christmas party for 70 families from these schools as well. Just last week, at the BMX Assembly over at Violet Elementary School, we donated BMX bikes to both Crosby and Violet Elementary School. We also donated caps and gowns to Heritage Computer Science Academy for their kindergarten program. During National Youth Week, our lodge will be recognizing some outstanding students from our local high schools and awarding them at our lodge meeting. We also will be sponsoring the West Garden Grove AYSO program and donating books to Peters Elementary School K through third for their new positive behavior book vending machine. Lastly, here tonight, representing Pacifica High School and receiving her gold award from troop #5194 is Irene Nguyen. We are very proud of her for her accomplishments. With your support, we look forward to continuing to help the youth in our community. Thank you.
Karen, thank you. See you next year.
Yep, yep. Let them clear out for a sec. All right. Next, we will go on to oral communications. And I do have a number of cards, so we're going to have to keep the timeline pretty tight. Except for, the very first one is Beverly Bolton from Working Wardrobes, who has somewhat of a presentation for us, so we'll let her go as long as she needs. Thanks. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, city staff, and community members. My name is Carlos Oregon. I'm the CEO for Thinkbox Technology Group. I'm also a 16-year Air Force veteran. And I sit on the Greater Irvine Chamber Board, the Orange County Workforce Development Board, the Board at UHSM, and lastly, the Board at Working Wardrobes. It is important for me to get back to the community, so I serve as a member of the Working Wardrobe Public Affairs Committee, which is why I'm here today. In Orange County, Working Wardrobes is a household name, and these pictures are typically what people know about the organization. It's literally in our name, Wardrobes. But there's so much more behind these exterior transformations that we help create. Before a client gets a beautiful new success suit, we first update their insides, their operating system, because changes on the outside reflect changes which have happened on the inside. For those that we serve, we see this transformation happen before our eyes. We truly do strive to change all of Orange County, one person at a time. I'd like now to introduce to you the CEO of Working Wardrobes, Bonnie Palmish, to share more with you.
Thank you so much, Carlos. We do not achieve this mission alone. We partner with over a hundred and eighty-five other agencies, nonprofits, organizations that are really good at what they do. We're really best-in-class at providing workforce development, preparing people to be upskilled and get better jobs. We focus on marginalized communities who are unemployed and underemployed and help them achieve gainful employment. That is steady work for steady pay and a job where you're contributing your unique assets. Just this year so far, we are currently working with over twenty-one individuals from the great city of Garden Grove. Those are veterans, adults, seniors, and people who have been involved in the justice system. If you grabbed these slides, you can follow along with me, I'm gonna try to be a little bit of both for you. We have been recognized throughout Orange County as a best-in-class, the best charitable organization several years in a row, best places to work, and last year, top-rated workplace in Southern California. We've also received national awards for our veteran employment services. All of that to say that we're really good at what we do and we've touched over a hundred and twenty-five thousand lives since our inception in nineteen ninety. What are we helping people do? We are helping people overcome all sorts of barriers to gainful employment. Those barriers might be entering the workforce after serving in the military, trying to enter or re-enter the workforce over age fifty-five, experiencing mental health challenges, substance addiction, all sorts of barriers, but all of them exacerbated by the high cost of living here in Southern California. Workforce development addresses the issues we are all concerned about: housing, public safety, education, food security, human issues. The humans that we are helping are in terrible choice situations. The choice between, do I pay for my rent or my grocery bill, my utility bill or my rent? Those are not sustainable choices, but when we are gainfully employed, we are able to make sustainable choices. So how do we do it? How do we create these kinds of transformations? We do it through career development and career navigation. We are the GPS for people's lives, helping them overcome these barriers on the road to gainful employment. And we do so much more than the clothes. We update, as Carlos said, the operating system first. That's upskilling, certification programs, not just connecting with resources in the community, but a warm handoff. All of these can be discovered if you would join me for a tour of our Career Success Center, which many people say, Bonnie, I've known Working Wardrobes for over thirty years, but you know what? We are the best we've ever been and we just recently remodeled in the summer of twenty-twenty-three. So, since the fire, since the pandemic, since the remodel, please come see where we are creating these transformations across the county. And if you know someone who needs these services, I highly encourage you to give them the information to contact us. Our testimonial in these slides shares the dignity and love with which we treat every human. That is a secret sauce of Working Wardrobes. We provide all of these services free to the clients we have the honor of joining on their employment journeys each year. That means that we count on your support to advocate that the funding be earmarked for workforce development, especially in a time when the state is facing a huge deficit and needing to cut in a lot of places. Please do not be a part of the problem that is not self-sustaining. That is to say, maybe the opposite is better to say. Support the solutions that create self-sustaining workforce readiness and transformations that individuals can then sustain throughout their lives. Our last slide has a QR code, cause what presentation would be complete without a QR code? If you aren't signed up yet, join our newsletter, get this information. There's that on the camera. And I'd love to entertain any of your questions on how we are bringing these services to Garden Grove and how you can help advocate to make sure that that remains the same.
Thank you Bevere.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thanks. Steve Thompson? You win.
Uh, my name's Steve Thompson. I'm a Vietnam Vet and a senior and taller Vietnamese councilman, shalliam, if I'm saying that right. My concern is Magnolia Park, which is, they did a revamp on that, very nice, put in new playground equipment, and the exercise equipment is my main concern. I've done other parks and they all have that Greenfield equipment. However, this new equipment, I was real excited to see it and go over it and I started to use it and I couldn't hardly touch it. It's very, uh, it's a different style and it's on a tension adjuster, like a shock absorber with a tension. And there are mostly people that use these park equipment are seniors and females, males. So, you know, the old equipment that you see is very easy to use, but this new, I tried to move it and I could hardly touch it. And I've gone to gyms and done workouts and other stuff, but I like the outdoor, cause it's available and you meet people and it's a lot better. When you go to the gym, everybody's on their phone and they're hogging the machines. So, you know, anyway, I've, I've talked to, I believe it's Mark Freeman.
Yeah.
And he's helping me with this, I met with him. I also contacted the vendor, which is Greenfield, they make a lot of equipment. But my problem is unless you're Arnold Schwarzenegger, I don't know how you use this thing. There, I put it, I put them on the lowest tension, which to me would be like nothing, but I could barely move them. And I usually go to these things and do maybe like just ten reps on a maybe ten or eleven different machines, and that's a good little workout. I couldn't do ten on one of these and I'd probably be in the hospital. I would, now, Mark said they weren't so bad, but I kinda looked at him and go, well, you're about half my age and you're doing pretty good, but I'm thinking of the public. Like I said, a lot of Vietnamese women and seniors are using these. Now, I go, I've gone to Westminster Park, I used their one at Golden West and at the Senior Center, and it's the older, uh, Greenfield who makes all these. Very easy to use, all the equipment, very easy to use. Now, these new equipment is fantastic and they're smaller and I understand what they're doing, but I ask you to try them out, or especially females to try these out, because I've been going there back and forth, cause I live real close to Magnolia Park, and I don't see anyone using them, no one. I see a couple of girls going, they go. And I talk to them, I say, is this okay with you? She said, no, too hard, too hard. And, uh, Mark gave me a list, I said, I'd like to know where some of these are at, where I'd like to go check them out, cause people are telling me, well, they're new. Well, I don't buy that. If something's new, it should work good right off the bat, it's when it gets old. Anyway, Buena Park, he gave me a park in Buena Park, which I grew up in, fifty years in Buena Park. And I, before I came here, I zoomed down there to check out their, they have the same thing, and I go, oh, same thing. You couldn't even hardly move them and nobody was using them. This is brand-new equipment, mind you. Because before Magnolia, when I would go to the park or look over there, I'd always see people there, all the time. Now, I don't see anyone. Now, I've asked if, like I said, I've talked to some of the, a lot of Vietnamese people, I've talked to them since being a Vietnam Vet, I get to know a lot of people and I like that. And by the way, it's Saigon and always will be Saigon. But, uh, you know, cause it's great and the park is great, that playground you put in, a lot of people are using that, very nice. And this equipment, I understand, like Mark was telling me, well, they wanted something smaller to go around the edge of the deal, which is great. I've never, but I've never seen this equipment anywhere else. And I'm just bringing this up, I've, like I said, I've already been working with Mark Freeman and he's got back with me, but I'm just bringing it up, says, I don't know who designed this, but I don't think they're thinking of the elderly or people, because if you go and try it, I don't know if any of you have done any of these, this is new, the first time I've seen it in Garden Grove, I don't think any of the other parks have this new type. And Mark gave me some examples and one was Buena Park, which I went and checked out, because most of the parks have those, uh, they're a lot easier, they kinda work on your body weight and they're very easy to use. And I'm just bringing this up, hopefully things could work, but I don't know what the vendor can really do on it.
Yeah.
That's my point, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming and bringing it up. I'm gonna go check it out. Timothy Bentley? Timothy Bentley? No? Okay, Kelly Kramer?
Good evening and thank you City Council, Mayor, and City of Garden Grove for all your, your opportu, my opportunity to speak. I am a lifelong resident of Garden Grove and recently discovered the city's plans for the new city center include demolishing the pond at the main library. In my opinion, and with the help of social media, realize I'm not alone in thinking that the city is making a mistake with the terrible decision to destroy one of our city's rare and treasured landmarks, to throw up an ugly parking structure to showcase the entrance to our city center. I, along with many grovers, love and have enjoyed our pond and wildlife for as long as I can remember. I understand the city informed the public of plans, but did that detail, the pond would be demolished. That's a question. I also read, I also read the city relocated wildlife, however, several ducks were either missed or returned to what was once their home. The plans for the new park failed to capture the charm and uniqueness of our beloved pond. It is generic, full of heat-capturing cement and also causes runoff, water-wasting grass, and non-native palm trees. Other grovers mentioned, we already have a space like this at the Village Green. Not only are we losing our pond, but also the wildlife and mature trees that shade, beautify, and help reduce temperatures. I also discovered the city voted to approve the plan on three twenty-six and in less than a month, our pond was drained. That sure was quick considering how long the rusty skeleton sat and the cottage product that remains incomplete. The city, since the, since Garden Grove taxpayers will be shouldering the majority of the hundred and fifty-two million dollar cost, why wasn't this put to them for a vote? I appreciate the need to revitalize our city center and also appreciate the importance of preservation. I respectfully request the City of Garden Grove alter their current plans by removing the parks, by, by moving the parking structure and preserve one of the few remaining cherished, mature, green spaces left in our city. Thank you.
Sean LaFleur?
Did I mess up your name?
No, you got it right.
Okay.
Alright, hello members of the community, I'm Sean LaFleur. And as a youth of the community, I've been having a bit of an issue with the rise of concern of climate change. This issue that I'm facing right now is an issue of my future and not just the future of the planet, the future of every other young person in this room and that exists within our community. Some of the solutions that I've seen around that I think would prove beneficial would be joining the OCPA, the Orange County Power Authority, so that we may finally tap in to, I feel like, in an underused industry, I suppose you could say, of green energy. And I don't think this just stops with green energy either. I would also like to draw some attention to the bike lanes and other forms of public transportation. As a young person, I only just recently bought myself a car, but up until then, I've solely relied on public transportation and just riding around on my bike. And I noticed that some of those facilities are rather lacking, those bike lanes are pretty sparse, they're very small, and I do feel a little bit uneasy, I guess you could say, when I'm in those bike lanes, or when I was in those bike lanes rather. And I would also like to see some improvement in public transportation as well and more investment towards it. And with that, I believe those are issues that I would like to put forth and thank you all for giving me this time today. Thank you all.
Thank you. Kevin Lee?
Good evening, council members. My name is Kevin and like many of the other young people here, I am deeply concerned with the climate crisis. I know it might not seem like the climate crisis can be tackled by, by us, a small city of Garden Grove, but many other cities, including forty-five states, have implemented their own climate action plans. Two hundred city governments have implemented a climate action plan and over a hundred others have developed one. It would mean a great deal to all of us young people if we too could do our part and also develop a climate action plan. Little things such as improving bike lanes, increasing pedestrian safety, and improving public transportation would greatly reduce our car dependency. Sometimes I have to wait over an hour for the next bus if I missed my first bus and many of the routes I take aren't running on the weekends, so it would be great if we could look into that. In addition to developing a climate action plan, I would also strongly consider joining OCPA. According to the EPA, joining CCA would save residents between fifteen to twenty percent on their energy bill and give residents a choice in what type of energy sources they could use for their energy. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys today and thanks for giving us the space to voice our concerns.
Thank you. So Rob?
Hi, good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I'm also a part of Sunrise Movement, so if you noticed, there's kind of like a group of young people back there. I just saw that you guys are making May first to May seventh, like the city's Young Person Awareness Week or something like that, like a young person celebration week. What would be really great for young people would be adapting, adopting a climate action plan. I think more than, I mean, any type of celebration you could present to us, that would be the most meaningful, right? So, by twenty-fifty, I don't know if you're all aware, the total amount of temperature change will have exceeded one point five Celsius. So, I'll be around your guys' age, maybe a little, a little older, you guys look pretty good. So, I mean, you know, I'm trying to butter you guys up, so listen to me. Just put yourself, put yourselves in my shoes in twenty-fifty. I'm gonna walk outside and see a sky full of red ash, you know? It's, it's hot, it's dangerous, I don't wanna have kids, cause my kids aren't gonna be able to go to the beach, cause actually, it's gonna be a lot more beach, yeah, a lot more ocean, so, nevermind, that's not the point. The point is, to make this pertain to Garden Grove, there's a website called ClimateCheck.com and that's one of the leading climate resources to kind of gauge where a city is at in terms of tackling climate change. Garden Grove is on a scale of one to a hundred, with a hundred being really bad and one being like amazing. You guys are at an eighty-three for drought risk, which is pretty bad, like I would probably, you know, wanna address that. Conversely, according Conversely, according to the same website, out of 178 census tracts in Garden Grove, 151 are also at risk for high-tide floods. So you're getting the worst of both worlds here, right? I don't mean to kind of sound pushy or anything, but it is, you know, your children's future, your grandchildren's future, my future that we're dealing with here. So I would strongly urge you guys to please consider adopting a zero-carbon plan. So just a way to tackle climate change. Hello. And additionally, I want to echo my predecessor in saying that joining the OCFA would be a great move on your part. You could save money for your residents, it'd be really politically popular, just. And also, you know, probably help the climate a little bit, so by moving towards cleaner energy, right? I had a bunch of stats here, but you guys don't want to hear it. You're, I hope you guys know that climate change is a real thing, so I don't have to inundate you with a bunch of facts and statistics. Yeah, I'm just hearing support of a plan to address a really big issue. And yeah, thank you for dealing with my antics.
Thank you. Lisa?
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Lisa Bonerchuk, and I represent the Sunrise Movement, a youth climate movement. As we celebrate Earth Week, I stand before you to advocate for the implementation of a climate action plan or a cap in the city of Garden Grove. Despite its name, Garden Grove lacks the abundance of diverse greenery. While Hester Basin Park showcases native greenery and plants, it should not stand alone in its endeavor. Other areas must also incorporate diverse native flora and more trees. A comprehensive cap would ensure the proliferation of quality, diverse greenery through neighborhoods. Diversity in trees and greenery plays a crucial role in mitigating greenhouse gas emissions, as approximately 25 of global emissions come from the land sector. Forests and greenery absorb approximately 2.6 billion tons of carbon dioxide every year, which accounts for 1/3 of the CO2 released from burning fossil fuels. By prioritizing the implementation of ecologically sustainable practices, the city can combat climate change and create a healthier environment for current and future generations. Streets should have diverse green ecosystems, because they only, they not only enhance aesthetics, but also improve public health. A healthcare sector accounts for about 8.5% of all greenhouse gas emissions. And the US public parks within Garden Grove can alleviate ongoing respiratory and health issues caused by emissions. A city with lower greenhouse gas emissions won't only lower respiratory issues, but studies have shown that physical activity in neighborhoods with high levels of greenery is three times higher, is three times higher in the areas with low levels of greenery. With the cap, Garden Grove can promote cleaner air and ensure general health of its residents. I ask you to prioritize the development and adoption of a comprehensive climate action plan that addresses the implementation of ecologically sustainable practices across various sectors. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam?
Good evening, sorry about that. Good evening, mayor and city councils, city council members. My name is Miriam Deluar, and I'm a resident of Garden Grove, been a resident my whole life. I'm with the Sunrise Movement and a high-schooler dual-enrolled at Florentine College. The Sunrise Movement is a youth environmental organization aiming for a safe environment and better future for all. I'm here tonight to urge you to introduce a climate action plan with a zero-carbon goal by 2030, as soon as possible, and to join the OCFA. As you know, climate change is a really serious threat to our community. The effects of climate change are already being felt here in Garden Grove in the form of more extreme weather events, such as heatwaves, droughts, and floods. These events are having a devastating impact on our health, our economy, and our quality of life. Just during these past few months, many parts of the county were put on an extreme flash flood warning list. And just two years ago, over 130 OC homes were under evacuations from fires that destroyed at least 20 homes in the county. And the railway tracks in San Clemente keep unfortunately sliding down due to landslides. And we can't keep denying the fact that climate change is an imminent threat, and we must address it as soon as possible if we wish to keep living our lives the way they are. That's why we strongly urge you to support a climate action plan and join the OCFA. A climate action plan or a cap is a roadmap for how we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and transition to a clean energy future. It would include measures such as increasing our use of renewable energy, improving energy efficiency, and reducing our reliance on fossil fuels. It would also have adaptation steps to strengthen the city through prioritizing progress in low-income communities, increasing the green spaces we currently have, and updating our infrastructure. Many cities in the county are already starting the process, and it's time we join the effort. Joining the OCFA would also be a major step toward achieving a zero-carbon goal by 2030. The OCFA is a nonprofit power agency that provides clean, affordable electricity to its members, to its member cities. By joining the OCFA, Garden Grove would be able to reduce its carbon footprint and save money on its electricity bills, while also having a space on the board to steer where the agency is headed. And I know that the OCFA has had a pretty rough history, but after the events of the previous years, it has changed its ways and is much more transparent. I strongly urge you to take action on climate change by introducing a climate action plan and through joining the OCFA. The Sunrise Movement would love to meet with you and discuss any way we can support these initiatives, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ruby Garcia? Should she come in?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Jones, city council members, city manager Kim, and city staff. My name is Ruby Garcia, and I'm the CEO and founder of the Andy and Aidan Safety Group. Here to invite you all, and all of the special needs families watching us from home, to our third annual Communities Come Together of Garden Grove on June 12th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, here at the Community Meeting Center at 11300 Stanford Avenue. We're excited to announce that OCFA will be joining in as a new partner this year with new safety stations, along with the Garden Grove Police Department. Our new station will be featuring firework safety as well as other safety stations, such as personal safety, how to interact with a police officer, now a firefighter. We're excited to bring these new stations to all the community members and invite all the families, all ages, to come into our event. Our events are always free. We just ask families to RSVP using our QR code on our flyer, and I'll leave one here as well. Or they could follow us on Instagram and go to our link tree in our profile. It'll take you straight to our RSVP site, or if you'd like, you can call or text me at 714-856-4914 to RSVP. We hope to see you all there. We'd love the support, as usual, from all of you, and we cannot wait. Have a good evening.
Please come join us on 6/12 from 5:00 PM, 6:00, 7:00 PM. Flash cards, not scripts. Thank you.
It's frozen, sorry.
All right, and that was the last of the oral communications cards I have. So we will close oral communications and move on to written communications. We do have two items listed, items two and three coming up.
Item two under written communications is consideration of a written request from the Honoring Our Fallen Organization for approval of temporary closure of city streets for Independence Day Freedom Parade on Saturday, June 29th, 2024. And Ms. Janet Paliow is here to provide the report.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Staff is here to convey a written request from the Honoring Our Fallen, a Garden Grove-based nonprofit organization, that would like to request city council approval for closure of city streets for the second annual Independence Day Freedom Parade on Saturday, June 29th, 2024. The, sorry. The proposed parade route has been reviewed by the Police Department Traffic Division. Organizers anticipate approximately 150 golf carts participating in the parade. The Police Department staff and Public Works Division, Streets Division, will provide staff support for the closure of city streets during the event. Staff has confirmed that the Honoring Our Fallen organization is in good standing with the IRS and Secretary of State. Approval for closure of city streets for the Independence Day Freedom Parade will not have an impact on the city's general fund. The organization will reimburse the city for all direct costs associated with the support of the event. It is recommended that the city council consider this request. This concludes my staff report. And staff, as well as representatives of the organization, are here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Any questions, comments, George?
Just a quick comment. Honoring Our Fallen is one of the, you know, premier nonprofits in Garden Grove. They offer services that are just really tremendous. They go out when service members die, and they, you know, do everything they can for the transport of the body, and they, and setting up the service, getting the family situated, and all this kind of stuff. And it's really kind of awesome that they're a Garden Grove-based nonprofit, and they do so much for our military. And with that being said, I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item three.
Item three is, under written communications, is consideration of a written request from the Garden Grove Community Foundation and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce that the daily tournament rate be waived at the Willowick Golf Course. And Ms. Paliow will provide the report as well.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Staff is here to convey a written request from the Garden Grove Community Foundation and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Board, requesting city council approval to waive the fees for a one-day use of Willowick Golf Course for the annual fundraising golf tournament that will be held this year on Wednesday, September 18th. For the past 18 years, the Garden Grove Community Foundation and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce have partnered to host the Golf Classic. Last year, it was renamed to the Rick v. Lerma Memorial Golf Classic. This event is the largest and most significant fundraiser for both organizations, and helps support foundation events, including the Free Summer Concert Series and various community groups, as well as assisting the chamber in promoting the Garden Grove business community and providing resources for tourists who visit Garden Grove. The Willowick Golf Course is owned by the city, and the city council has traditionally granted joint use of the golf course to the foundation and chamber for the annual Golf Classic fundraiser. The nonprofit rate for an all-day tournament with 144 players is $4,320. The foundation and chamber are requesting for this fee to be waived. It is recommended that the city council consider this request. And that concludes my staff report. I'm here, available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, guys. All right, we will now go over to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen Peñalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communications. Consent calendar is just one item, receive and file. Can I get a motion? Call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go to sanitary district. Call the sanitary district meeting to order. Can they call roll, please?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen Peñalosa?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Yeah.
And President O'Neill?
Here. Thank you. At this time, all we have, we've already held oral communications simultaneously with council. All we have is consent of the minutes from last month.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from board members for the sanitary district? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:30 in this room. Thank you. All righty, we will reconvene. City council takes us on to consent calendar. We've already done four and five. So it's recommended that items six through 17 be acted on simultaneously.
I'll move the balance?
Second.
Call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great, we have no items for consideration and no public hearings tonight, so that takes us straight to matters. We do have one listed, which is Orange County Fire Authority update.
Yes, item number 18, the presentation is the Orange County Fire Authority update, as requested by city manager Kim and OCFA Division Chief Craig Covey will provide that presentation.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. Appreciate the time tonight. This one will be a little bit longer than what I'd like to do on a routine basis, because I'm gonna kind of summarize last year as well. So with support of the city manager, we'd like to just kind of go through and highlight what your fire department has been doing for you for the past year and into the first quarter of this year, okay? So real quickly, on just a general update, we're really actively pursuing grants and stuff. Garden Grove's a cash-contract city, so we want to keep the costs on the cash contracts as low as possible. So we do look for alternate funding sources all over the place. So trying to really be fiscally smart with all of our cities. You should see an OCFA Division One social media page coming soon, so we'll be able to highlight, yeah, that's good distraction right there. Highlight some of the things going on in the city that you guys will be able to tune in, and it'll be more than just OCFA. I'll try to really keep it active with what's going on in the Division One cities, especially Garden Grove. Super busy with all the crews and promoting. A couple of former Garden Grove members have promoted through the system to captain of Italian chief in the two recent tests, so the cream keeps rising to the top there. So let's see here, we're gonna try a different link here. If you haven't had a chance, our OCFA open house is really special. And I want to invite the community, I won't play the whole video here, but we got it queued up somewhere, stand by. Get a little technical help. It should be this one. There we go. Just, I'll play a short version of it here in the instance of time. But it's a really incredible event. I wanted to make sure this council is aware of it, as well as the residents of Garden Grove, that we opened up the entire OCFA with tons of equipment, tons of events, Highliner dogs, live burns, all the equipment and things like that. I think we had in excess of 15,000 to 20,000 people come through this last year. And I think, I want to make sure that next year we advertise this a little bit more within the community and share a really fun day for your residents to come out and see what it is to be part of OCFA's system and all the things that we can provide to your residents. Okay, I'm gonna kind of keep moving on to a different one here, back to the next slide here. So, hopefully I'll move forward. Okay, so this last week was OC, was 911 Dispatcher Appreciation Week. They call it the Telecommunications Spokes. So we have an incredible staff at our 911 center. It's called the Emergency Command Center. Last year, they took 228,000 calls and dispatched 178,000 responses in under a minute. Did an amazing job. I want to play this quick clip. And this is one of our members who's brand new, literally on probation. And this is a clip that, of a call he had. I'm sorry, this may be a little difficult for you. Let's hang on, we got to turn the volume on.
Okay, was there water in the tub? I need you to get her flat on her back. How old is she? We need to get her flat on her back. We're going to do CPR, okay? Is she breathing? Okay ma'am, I need you to take a deep breath. We're going to start CPR.
Right, I'm ready.
Okay, you're going to put one hand in the middle of her chest?
Yeah.
And between the nipple line and you're going to push down hard and fast, okay? Is she breathing normally?
Not really, you can hear her.
Is it still? Okay, we're going to continue CPR then. Is that her crying?
Yeah, so the baby's crying, breathe enough.
Okay.
What an incredible job by a gentleman. When you talk about first to serve, you know, our 911 dispatchers are truly our first to serve. And you can imagine the type of personality it is to handle situations like that. And super proud of that group for what they do on a daily basis. Okay, so moving forward, OCFA outreach, we've been super aggressive with our equity, inclusion and diversity outreach. And here are some highlights of it. We have a group that's formed together that's actively in all the communities, trying to target all different types of folks that may be interested in the fire service and never had an introduction to it. So it's a newer program for us. And you can see by the numbers there, they've made some very good strides and progress in it. And we'll continue doing so. Celebration side, yeah, I get to throw my picture in there. There's one of the captains from Grove that was a valedictorian of that company officer class. And then I did hit my third year mark, so good for me, not much longer. Let's see, on Garden Grove, so in 2023 in review, I kind of highlighted your city there. We ran 15,500 calls last year. So it continued to be a very busy year. OCFA, my Division, Division One was our busiest division in the department. And that is a 19% increase over the last three years. So the call volumes continue to rise pretty quickly. Real quick summary of our losses and participation across the agency. We did have a kind of a significant loss last year. If you look at the 2023 number, that was included, the Hangar Fire, which was valued at $150 million for the one building. So unfortunately, that one's kind of an outlier that jumps out. But financially, we're doing very well. Our unfunded liability is running very well. So as an agency, we're very healthy in moving forward and looking into the future. So we're not just 911 service, we also are part of your fire prevention. So all of our engine companies and a team of inspectors are inspecting all of your businesses. So last year, over 18, almost 18,000 inspections were done. And in Garden Grove, there were 3,000 done. We're currently working on this year, so we're at 950 with anticipation being done by May, the end of May. So the, your communities should see our inspectors and firefighters out in their businesses doing all of our fire safety stuff that we normally do. So don't be surprised if someone's calling you, hey, why are they here? It's our normal thing that we do every year. On the community event side, we're also very active in the community events, supporting John and his team with all the different community events. We were super busy in Division One. And Garden Grove alone had 81 events that we had OCFA representation at. City Manager has asked for me to be a little more aggressive at taking pictures and sharing it with you. I am trying to do that. Just because you haven't gotten a photo doesn't mean we haven't been out there. We try to get to as many events as we possibly can as your fire department. Calls, again, last year we ran 15,000 calls, 15 and a half, roughly 43 calls a day, averaging about a six-minute, 55-second response time. So seems to be doing pretty good there. We're at 4,620 calls this year, just one call per day more, but it still continues to be that steady climb. A little breakdown in them, most of the calls are medical aids, but we did have a very active structured fire year. Councilmember O'Neill was commenting to me that he remember being that busy on fires, but we were pretty darn steady last year in structure fires all throughout the city. All those photos you see there are from incidents this last year. It's not old file photos. And this year continues to remain busy with both medical aids and structure fires and everything else in between. We had a pretty good hazmat event. That's the one photo you see in there with our hazmat team, type one hazmat team in there mitigating an emergency. Real cool story in that made it out there, Agent 86 helping an old lady across the street, you know? The police don't get all the credit, we're out there too. So sorry Chief of Mayor. We did have a really significant and near-miss structure fire over off of Valley View Street. Councilmember Brightigum, you were talking about the response there. We had a near-miss when that facade collapsed down and almost hit the firefighter that was there battling the fire. While that was a close near-miss, was a very good success in that we held the fire to the original suites there and protected a very, very large strip center to keep the other occupancies still open. Okay, sorry it's sideways here, but the way it loaded, it's still loaded wrong. This was a structure fire we had where a gentleman arsoned his own house, broke the, sorry for technical difficulties, broke a gas line to his house. And we were on scene in three minutes. And that was our on-scene arrival video there from a resident. Well evolved, what was really great about this is the house to the right, we saved. We're kind of surprised we did because of the amount of fire that was already impacting it on arrival. But we're able to save that house next door, which is a huge, a huge win in this incident. This was a very interesting and challenging incident we had on the 22 freeway here in Garden Grove. That's a Tesla. So that Tesla struck that K rail and there's no motor in front of a Tesla. So the carry rail went directly through the vehicle, pinned the driver inside. He is alive, we were able to rescue him out of there and he survived the incident. But you can see a pretty dramatic incident there and very challenging rescue by our firefighters. Another one here, sorry. Love the technical difficulty. One thing I want to highlight for the residents here is we're really having a struggle with trash truck fires. The Waste Management reported out that we are losing roughly a truck a month in town. And I'm seeing probably two to three fires across the county a day. Or more like a week, that's probably a safer statement. And the concern really is what's being thrown away. So and I'm asking the residents to be cognizant of what they're throwing away because you start mixing that stuff and we start having these fires. And we're having quite a few of these across the agency. And this was one just here in Garden Grove, right at the freeway on ramp there. So there was that dramatic one that you saw up in LA that blew up and injured some firefighters and stuff. So there's a lot of hazards that come with this incident. So just asking for a little support from the residents and be cautious on how they're disposing their hazardous materials. Fire we had on Cobblestone Drive here over off of Euclid. This was a pretty dramatic fire that the firefighters did a really good job of isolating it to the garage on a multi-unit apartment or townhome complex and saved the units on both sides. Significant damage to the original structure, but a really good aggressive fire attack saved quite a bit of stuff around that. Hazardous materials fire we had over on, off of Western. This had the potential to be a major incident. But between the initial actions of our firefighters and the follow-up of the hazmat team, we were able to minimize the runoff and exposure of where all these camel schools were going to go on a pH stuff, if you know, a normal pH is about a seven. That was about two, two and a half on a pH scale, which will etch the concrete. So a major incident handled very well by the crews and prevented a pretty large issue there. And lastly, I'm not going to play these videos because they go wonky as well. We do have quite a robust swiftwater rescue capability supported by helicopters. This is down at Memory Street in the Santa Ana Riverbed, where we had a rescue there and pulled a homeless gentleman off one of the islands there. Helicopter was able to hoist in a helicopter, firefighter rescuer, pull him off and get him to shore safely. But that's part of the system that's available to your residents. We had a couple this day, one of them I ended up being the commander of because I happened upon it on the way into work. So it was a busy day this day. And then lastly, we did have an incident here on Bixby Avenue, working house fire. And we did, we're able to pull a dog out of that one. So got a nice little photo there. That one is a good end story on it, considering the conditions that the dog was in, as you see in the photo there. So our firefighters are trained for part of this, believe it or not, with animal rescue. We do have little masks and have been taught CPR on them so that we can provide initial care to them and in support with PD and animal control, get them transported to the hospital, hopefully for a positive outcome like this one though. A lot of times it's just some good stimulation and oxygen and they come around pretty quickly. So that's it for our, kind of our first quarter update, a little bit long. I apologize on that, but kind of highlight some of the things. Last year was a super busy year, trying to kind of sort through some of the pictures and videos that were worth your time. I have a ton more, but available to have any questions, should you have them.
Thanks Chief, good updates. Colleagues, any comments or questions?
I'll just make a quick comment. Just so proud of the agency as a whole, number one. Number two, to see the garden, the former Garden Grove members escalating through the ranks. TJ McGovern, our past Assistant Chief, is currently in second-in-command, so to speak, over there. And a lot of others have elevated. So very proud of the work they're doing over there. Outstanding agency from everything I've seen, not only the work they do day-to-day, but the financial health of the agency is outstanding, which keeps our contract cost down, which means that we can use those dollars in the community and on other things. So thank you Chief for everything you're doing, we appreciate it. 500 calls a month, what is it?
A day.
A day in the county.
Correct.
500 calls a day in the county, 20,000 calls a month. And they respond to about 15,000 to 16,000 calls a month in the county. And we're the fifth largest city, we're a very active city, as you saw. So we get a percent, those large percentage of those calls. So you guys do a great job, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm a real stickler for outreach and education. And it's great to see just all that you're doing out in the community and being able to showcase that and furthering your social media reach. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
On the same token, I do want to say thank you so much for all the great work that you guys have been doing. Everywhere I go, I always hear great thing about our team. And this happened to my dad a little bit over a year ago. He'd hurt job and we called, you know, the dispatch and then the fighter came really quick. So I just want to say thank you. Listen to your presentation, it did make me feel so happy that we have a great team here. And that was the reason why actually I went and helped make the meal for the dispatch the other day. That was it, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Alrighty, pinky chief.
Yeah, I bet.
Okay, we'll go around the horn for matters and then we'll wrap it up. George?
Really nothing, oh, I do. Congratulations, Matt West. We had a reception for our new Assistant City Manager prior to the council meeting. So welcome, welcome you officially. And that's all I have. Yeah, congratulations Matt. Just wanted to comment on a few things that, on the speakers brought up, Magnolia Park. We had a ribbon cutting and a grand opening, it was great. We're actually looking into the equipment right now. We're going to have the manufacturer check the specifications, make it as, work as best as possible as we can and check the other parks too that we've put this equipment in. So there's people working on that. Next, I was going to comment on the state of the city that we had. That was outstanding. Back to the future there for Garden Grove, that was pretty outstanding. And it was a great tribute to Steve Jones, it was awesome. Again, the OCFA, they do an outstanding job. One thing I was just going to mention about that is the reason you have these fires in the trash truck, not only materials that can heat up and compost and create fires, but the electronics. So please, 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 if you have electronics and you're disposing of them, please remove the batteries, any kind of battery, remove it and dispose of that separately. That's why these trash truck fires happen most commonly because something is arcing or sparking in there. So please be aware of that. And I am also working on some fencing and things over at the Drainage District, Gilbert and Chapman over there, trying to get some fencing around the easement areas over there. So working on that, that's it, thank you.
Yes sir, couple items. So last couple day, I attend couple event and I do want to promote the engineering a little, really quick. The Society Woman Engineer Orange County, I joined the team many, many years ago when I was a young, young engineer at the Boeing Company. So this is the first time they ever have a banquet to recognize outstanding student award in Garden Grove City. So I actually was able to get a couple certificates to give it to them. And so that, even though for Society Woman Engineer, but in the room, we have probably one-third were male. And so it's just a very feel great, warm-hearted to see the support from everyone. And then the second one was just related to engineering too. If you remember, a couple weeks ago, we gave a spotlight for the Lego team from St. Columban. And at that time, they won the state championship. But now they actually move on to world championship. And not so you remember, but that was about, the problem was some, they want to try the isolation for elder and veteran. So it was something that, you know, sixth grader came up with the idea. And so I took them to the Acacia Adult Center so that they could interview the people there. And everyone, everyone loved them. But I just want to bring this up because I want to promote engineering in our city. You know, with the Society Woman Engineer, but also the robotic team, this is their second year and they already won state championship and world championship, you know, going there. So if any team out there, any school would like to do something like this, I would love to make that connection. So we would have more engineer in our city. Second thing, earlier we talked a little bit about the Business Week, the promotion. So a couple years ago, through the Presidential Management Council Program, I was selected to be represented for the LA SBA Director. And make a long story, so that was the first time I knew about SBA and SBD, FBDC, all that. And the amazing thing I want to bring up here is that during that time, I was given 18 million dollars to give it to the community, to the businesses. So I did want to let the business out there that there's so much money, government or, you know, city or especially our Garden Grove City too, we have the job first and different programs that support the businesses. And so if you need help, please reach out to our staff, we have amazing staff. We have many programs to support. And also we have Chamber of Commerce that they really help the businesses to make the connection and help you with growing your businesses. Next item is about the climate change. The last couple, I've been watching a couple movie about the climate change. And then I was driving home, thinking one of these days so hot that when you try to work, you wouldn't want to try to work. And so one of the thing I want to bring up, you know, with the Earth Week, our city have the little baskets for the food waste. I know it's not really directly relate, but also just to save the environment. Since I got that little bucket from our public work, I have been, anytime I see any little food, I try my best to, you know, take it to the food waste and try to save our environment. Little thing that we do, you know, recycle bottle, plastic and things like that. But I think whatever we can help, right? So thank you to the youth that came and talked about that because it's very important. And it takes a lot of effort from everybody to make something happen. And I'm glad to see that from our youth. Next item, I have received several call, email, emails and text messages about our Garden Grove part. So I guess the grass will grow overgrown and then people, the soccer team there, they said that we have a lot of pothole on the ground. So when they play, they go home, their body hurt and different thing. And then also other email about we don't have the sidewalks. So and then the issue about the restroom and then graffiti and so many things. So I passed information to our staff already, we're going to look into that. But I know that I brought this up in the past, that we would love to get some grant or some money out there from anyone above or somewhere. But hopefully I bring it up here, maybe my council, my college here that will be able to do something or help with finding some fund for our cities so that we could do something about that part. That's it, one of the big part, we want to invite people to come, but That's one of the big part, we want to invite people to come, but when, you know, there's so many issue with that part, and it's not really nice, so welcoming. People have to go to different part, which is not nice. So the, the soccer team now already reached out to me, and they post on the uh Facebook and different places that hopefully um they want me to bring that message here to the mayor, and to the council member, and to the staff. Um, and later on, they said that they would like to come to our um council meeting to talk about it. Um, last but not least, um May eleven, that's a when um District Three will host the large item pickup at Garden Grove Park, so please um bring your unwanted um furniture or big item, you could drop it there, and um this will be free. That's it, sir.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Um, I found it uh very informative and educational uh the presentation on uh the Small Business Development Center. Um, it is uh with uh great respect that we honor our small businesses in National Small Business Week, and uh thank you to Ursula, who um was able to recognize our small business in every district. And I actually ren- recommended at least three restaurants. One was um Tanmay Restaurant, who's family-owned since uh nineteen seventy-seven or seventy-nine, but the elderly couple could not make it to the recognition, but they're like family to us. Uh, another was Island Cafe in my district on the corner of Westminster and Brookhurst, and they also uh have served our community very well. Uh, but uh Milakai, I particularly am fond of. It's a, a location that we patronize almost weekly. And I remember um during COVID, it was hard times for everybody, hard times to find a place to eat, just to sit down, have a good meal. And they had respected all of the social distancing, all of the guidelines from the national guidelines to the state guidelines, and that's what I found most impressive, even as they were struggling, they'd never shut down. And they were there for us when we couldn't have a good meal, and they were one of the few that stayed open. Uh, and they continue the struggle. They're not yet back on their feet. It's family-owned, and there's three generations. The first generation started it. Uh, the grandmother comes out every now and then, but she's very elderly. And you saw the husband and wife, the mom and pop business, that came with their son, who's third-generation restaurateur. So if anybody knows Little Saigon, they know Milakai. And so I'm very proud of them coming in to receive the recognition, as well as all of the other businesses and restaurants that we recognized tonight. So a big shout-out to them. Thanks for coming. Um, and uh I really want us to celebrate the, our small businesses as the moms and pops businesses are very important to first and second generation. As we grow in this community and become landmark and contribute to the economy of our communities, uh we need to support them more, and thank you to Ursula uh for recognizing that, and hopefully we can do it more often, not just once a year. As um, I hope we can recognize more businesses uh in our city. And uh once again, officially welcome, Matt West. Uh, you got uh big shoes to fill. Yes, that's Lisa's old job. She's city manager now, and we've really rounded out that executive team. If you need any tools or resources, please let her know and let us know. We wanna provide you with everything you need to help us grow and and function and keep our bottom line healthy. You already know our priorities. You went to our annual fiscal meeting, and um uh hopefully we can keep a very strong budget, and so we can serve our city uh many years into the future, and hope you stay on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, congratulations, Matt West. Welcome to Team Garden Grove, and thank you for, yeah, being here. Um, a couple things. Uh, first, I wanna congratulate obviously Shorma House, Small Business Week. They're a wonderful District Five restaurant. If you haven't had an opportunity to taste their food and frequent their establishment, please do. I have eaten pounds of chicken kebab and rice over the years from, from their establishment, and it's excellent every time. Uh, I also want to let everybody know that GG Gems, which is our streamlined home beautification awards in Garden Grove, the last day to nominate a home is tomorrow. So we particularly need people in District Five and Six to come on. Somebody's got a house, you planted a new tree, you just got back from Home Depot with a bunch of flowers. You're making everything look great for a summer. Please nominate your home, or a friend's house, or a neighbor. We wanna make sure we get as many nominations as possible, and then voting will take place uh May sixth through the nineteenth, and winners will be announced May twenty-seventh. So we know we have a lot of beautiful homes here in Garden Grove, so make sure you get those nominations in, and that's at GGcity.org slash GG Gems. And another opportunity I wanted to mention, we have some high school students, it looks like, sitting in the audience. Um, I sit on OCTA, and I've been on there since January and have learned so much, not only just about transportation, but about opportunities that they have in the community, and one of which is the Teen Council. And that opportunity is for high school students who'd like to learn more about transportation-related projects, as well as focusing on building leadership skills, communication, and team-building efforts as well. Uh, you can find an application uh which will be open until May thirty-first at OCTA.net slash Teen Council. Thank you.
Penny?
Penny's updates for tonight include, uh, congratulations to Matt West, we're really excited for you, and can't wait to spend the remainder of our term with you until we're gone. Um, also a reminder for tomorrow is Denim Day. Uh, for my colleagues whose first year is here, uh Garden Grove has been extremely supportive of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Uh, we wear denim and we gather around for a picture. Tomorrow, it'll be at Steel Craft at two PM. Um, if you're not aware of the history, uh it dates back to a ca- a Supreme Court case in Italy where a young woman's rapist was about to be set free uh because she was wearing jeans, and it was deemed that because her jeans were so tight, she had to help him um remove them, making it consensual. And so as, as such, we wear denim uh in protest and to create awareness around uh Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I hope that the two of you could join us, and if not, please wear denim and take a photo and post it in hashtag Sam um to help us promote uh Sexual Assault Awareness and Denim Day. Um, and that's it from me, Mayor. Thank you.
City Manager Lisa Kim.
Mayor, members of the city council, just a couple updates I wanted to share. The city is launching a new three-month multi-language awareness campaign highlighting important information and services from the Community Development Department's Planning, Building and Safety, and Code Enforcement Divisions. Themed Plan, Build, Beautify, the campaign aims to increase knowledge about the services available to plan and build projects and keep properties looking really their best. Well, now, in phases, the campaign begins with planning, followed by building and safety and code enforcement. We have a s- social media giveaway on the city's Instagram, and it's currently underway. One lucky follower will have the opportunity to win a forty-eight quart igloo cooler filled with do-it-yourself tools, city items, and a Home Depot gift card. And so we encourage everyone to visit the city's website for more information. And also, I know there is a new um blue fence that's surrounding Civic Center Park, and um we anticipate some additional artwork that will be placed on the fence during the duration of the Civic Center revitalization project and the construction of the new police building and the associated parking structures. So be on the lookout in the next couple weeks for additional student art from our Garden Grove Unified Student um district, and we're excited for them to participate in our, 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 celebrating our fencing and our artwork. So that's all I have.
Ready? I just wanna thank um some of our amazing staff that helped put together the State of the City luncheon from a few weeks ago, so to Jeff, Marie, Anna, Veronica, Jen Goddard, Noel, everybody else that was involved in all the behind-the-scenes stuff on just a ton of work that went into producing that amazing event, and it was very heartwarming for me, obviously, so I just wanna thank the crew for all that. Uh, General Counsel James, do we have any need for a closed session, anything to report out?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Thank you all. With that, we will stand adjourned, so enjoy the rest of your evening.